Motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as printed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Approve the minutes from the last meeting?
I'll make the motion approve the minutes last.
Second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from last meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay.
You want to shut your cellphone off?
Seven o'clock.
I'm not, you're right.
No, no.
Don't go on that one, that was wrong.
Okay, uh.
Payroll. The time is officially.
Seven oh one.
That's what I thought.
I have handed in the time cards, but I have not had a chance to go through the, uh, register yet. Uh, Francis bills to be paid.
Yeah, on, uh, docs, we can add another two hundred and forty dollars. I wish for, uh, concessions for the pool. That changes our number at the bottom to, uh, one, six, three, zero, seven, nine point one, two.
Any other questions for Francis on the bills to be paid?
All them electric supplies are for the new, all new stuff there.
There's three there for, for T and R and the third one, the bottom one is actually for testing the oil and the sub.
The sub transformers.
Sub transformers.
We have that done once a year just to make sure that they're still okay and, and they are.
Any other questions?
Yeah, that, that T and R electric there, Gary, that thirty-three or thirty-four thousand, whatever that is. That is, uh, most of the, um, transformers and the two.
Two switches.
Switches, right. And most of that stuff we'll use next year in our project, so. You gotta remember, you know, some of that stuff, we talked, I don't know if it was last, last, uh, meeting or the meeting before that, but some of that hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars of material that we're buying, a lot of that isn't going to be used even this year.
No.
That's for upcoming, upcoming years, so.
No, we're trying to stay ahead of the game.
You just won't get it bought.
Yeah, it does two things. It beats the price increase, which you know you're gonna have.
Yep.
And then it, we've got it here if we need it.
We can install it whenever we want.
If we need it, right.
Any other questions?
I make the motion to approve the bills.
Second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve the bills as printed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay.
Did you vote on that or did you abstain?
Aye.
Uh, discuss and approve year end clerk's report. There's some changes that Chris said he has made.
Sorry, I'll quit screwing around here. Uh, first thing I want to talk to you guys about, uh, if you remember at the last meeting, we talked a little bit about the seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that we went backwards, uh, last year. And so if you look at the very top of page five, uh, instead of just telling you, you know, that we, we lost money here, we lost money there. I thought I would put that in something that you guys could actually see. So if you look at urban renewal up there at the top, that's our, the new addition that we made. And the revenue, uh, that we had come in was for lot sales. Um, the whole, the bond that we bonded for that was in prior year, so the expense that we had, um, actually was all, because we, we just saved the forty thousand dollars that we had in lot sales. So there was a sixty thousand dollar difference there. Park renovation was about two hundred thousand roughly of a difference. And then our electric bond that we paid off early, obviously there was no revenue for that. We'd been saving that for a couple of years. And then, uh, electric material that we bought at the end of the year and, uh, and then the CDBG, uh, the finishing up of the CDBG. So if you look at that, uh, and you look at the balance over at the right-hand side there, about a hundred and ten thousand dollars is what, uh, you know, had we not done any of this stuff that we did, we would have been to the good a hundred and ten thousand dollars, which is generally about where we're at when we finish up the year, right around that hundred and ten thousand dollar mark, after we transfer money and, and do what we do. So, so I just wanted to explain that to you first off. And then, second, this is, this is a clerk's report that you guys approved at the last meeting. And we had a couple of, uh, couple of small changes that I wanted to, uh, to just show you guys. So if you go to page ten, uh, it's highlighted in green, so you won't be able to miss it, um, unless you're colorblind. Look at the new shelter house electric, parks H two O and parks gas. That, that's all for our shelter house and that was all new, I don't know, probably in January or February. I don't remember exactly when we did that, but when you make a new number, if you don't go into the computer, if I don't go into the computer and tell it to print out on this sheet, it won't print. Now, the numbers are in the totals and so the totals were all, uh, correct. The totals for, um, for the general fund were all correct, but you just couldn't see this part of it.
Where it was delegated.
Right, so, uh, I found it as I was doing some reconciliation and moving some stuff around for our, for our year end, so. So that's one thing. Then if you look on page eleven at urban renewal, uh, there was a, uh, electric contract, contractual services, uh, was, was entered into urban renewal, so I moved that, uh, to about, almost three thousand dollars, moved that, uh, out of there. And then, uh, at the bottom of page eleven, credit card fee transactions, um, that was not on the original report. That's kind of the same thing as the first thing I told you about. It's a new number, so I had to go in there and tell it to print out. Page sixteen, uh, we had training classes, uh, in our electric. That wasn't on the original report. And then down below that a little bit, our twelve-five rebuild was, uh, originally it was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and, and now it's a hundred and twenty-six, so that was a little bit different. So, all in all, it didn't really change a lot. It, it did change, um, some of the ending fund balances, just a little bit, uh, a couple thousand dollars here and there. So, and that's the reason why I had to, I had to go in there and change that stuff because, um, you guys approved some transfers, like an eighty-three thousand dollar transfer into our garbage fund. So, when I was going to do those transfers, it didn't come out exactly right, so then I had to, had to go in here and do some, tell it to print some stuff, so then I knew, I knew what the actual numbers were, so.
Basically fine tuned it.
Yeah, really, really fine tuned it is, is all I really did, but, uh, I didn't want to do that and then not tell you guys about it, so.
Do we're right now, you think, Chris?
So we're right, we're, yeah, Gary, we're right now, yeah.
Page twenty-one.
Yeah, um, actually, if you guys don't mind, I wouldn't, wouldn't mind approval of this final clerk's report.
Okay, you want to go through page twenty-one first or do you want to take the motion first?
Twenty-one is this, the beginning of, uh.
The new year, the new clerk's report?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know if that was on.
That's okay.
The tail end or if that was?
No, that's the.
We approve the changes.
I'd second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to amend the, uh, previous.
Year end.
Year end report, clerk's here, clerk's year end report to, uh, what has been shown us tonight. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Okay, now start on the new one, Chris.
Yeah, um, okay, so that starts on page twenty-one. And if you look there, kind of in the middle of that page, that a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars that we moved over to, uh, from savings to the checking account, that's all, uh, rebuild material and the track. The racetrack, the projects that we had down there, uh, and all of that money came out of the wind generator account. So, um, that account is down to, right now, it's down to seven thousand dollars. That's, that's what needs to stay in there. We'll have to pull a little bit more out because there's a couple of bills that we have to pay for the track project yet. But I'm gonna go to the bank then, uh, oh, and you need to do that too, Rob, just so you know. Go to the bank Thursday morning to borrow that money for our rebuild project and it's gonna be roughly a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. I don't have the exact numbers.
Is this thing on? My thing says my battery's on.
That switch on the other side is.
Yep.
There we go.
You light up my.
Yeah.
I can see.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so, so that's what that is. Go down from there a little ways, transfer from TIF, that fifteen thousand five hundred dollars that we paid our rebate payments to Cooks, Cookie and, uh, Corn Belt.
Corn Belt.
So we transferred that out of our.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yeah.
Yeah, page twenty-one, at the bottom of page twenty-one there, Gary. So, that's what that's on there for. Um, now we can go to twenty-two. And, uh, what I want to show you in here, look at the bottom of that, uh, those paid, that, that, those words and numbers there, bond reserve fund, that was the sixty-nine thousand dollar CD that we had, cashed that in, put that right in the savings account right below it. We talked about putting that in there because that's a, an account that we don't generally do anything with. Yeah, so, we'll save that. The community center main savings fund says it's got twenty-eight thousand dollars in it. We're gonna pull twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars out of that, uh, for the, uh, parking at the shelter house. But then, as soon as we do that, we're gonna put a ten thousand dollar check back in there because we got ten thousand dollars from Gilrenzi for that project, so that helps. Yeah, it's not, it's not as much as, as I wanted, but, uh, it helps.
You get, you get the letter, she's, gets a copy, you get a copy of it.
Yeah. One other thing I want to tell you too is, if you notice our TIF account, we got a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in there. This fall, when we get our TIF money in, that all is gonna go probably right into our savings. I, I don't think we're gonna have the ability to, to save the money that we normally save this month. It's just been, you know, we've, we've had too many things go on and, uh, so I think what we're gonna do is take that TIF money that we certified for, um.
Electrical thing.
Yeah, it was electric, the well.
The well.
The well, uh, we're gonna take that money and we're gonna put it right into savings. And then, uh, and, and then the, the next spring, the same thing will happen again. That TIF money will go right into our general fund and, uh, that'll be for our well too, so. And you can see on there, the savings wind turbine is seven thousand seventy-four dollars and ninety-one cents. We'll replenish that when we get our funds Thursday.
Well, Chris, that, that ten thousand dollars are pretty nice though.
Oh, yeah.
Now, we gotta send them a thank you or something.
That was nice.
We gotta do, uh. What did we get last year, twelve?
Uh, no, the library got it last year and, uh, I think they got eighteen thousand.
Last year?
Yeah. Yeah, the library got, got everything that Walleye got last year, so.
Okay, it's like, uh, it's like, uh, Ron and I were talking before the meeting. Chris is doing a really good job as far as writing grants because without the grants, we wouldn't get anything, would we, Ron? We were talking about that earlier and so, kudos to Chris. I really appreciate you writing a good grant, Chris.
Well, thank you for saying that, Stephen, you know, I guess.
Well, I've been approached by people who say, we do not need a person in Chris's position and a person in Lynn's position. And I say, well, you're crazy. You know, because, number one, you know, I mean, I mean, if we would list all the grants that we've gotten in the last year, we would see that number two, if we would list all the things that we've done with natural gas and with electric and, and those kind of things, I think they'd see that too, but, you know, they, they seem to think that we need to go back to the old ways. Like, some of these gentlemen up here on the wall were mayors that had time to do the stuff, weren't working a full-time job, you know, and had time to do a lot more than what our mayor does, and I'm not saying you're doing a bad job, you're doing a great job, you know, but you have a full-time job, you know, so I think that we've moved into a different era here and we just need to have a person there and I think that all the things that have been done, you know, are pretty much paid for Chris's salary, so I don't know.
Well, the rules and the regulations that broaden up to that too, that, you know, with the grants, you gotta go to school even to write a grant anymore and then Lynn is doing a super job as far as customer relations and stuff, working behind the counter, so.
We're just lucky we got Gilrenzi and them kind of grants around.
Honestly, we really.
Yeah, Womagosh.
Womagosh, there's two of them.
Yeah.
And the gambling money is never hurts, but you gotta have matching funds.
You know, we actually have a ten thousand dollars here sitting here that we're trying to create a, find a mountain fund in the city too.
That'd be nice.
As you get on in years, think about.
Think about.
The Gary favorite foundation.
And honestly.
Maybe we could get corn back up to five or six that year.
But honestly, you know, when you think about that and, I mean, we're, we're joking about Gary giving money right now, but, you know, in the future, uh, that's really a smart thing for Gary to do because there's a twenty-five percent tax credit on any money that you give to him and, and not like that, you know? So, say, I mean, we've got a lot of farmers that live around here that are older farmers, you know, they could give ten thousand dollars each and.
Not bad an eye.
Twenty-five hundred dollar, uh, tax reduction for them and, uh, you know.
Make a big difference.
Ten thousand dollars, ten times is, is a lot of money.
Probably our biggest trouble I got, the people that are really out pushing with that kind of money, they got somebody hired or somebody going around asking people to do something like that.
Sure.
And it's a little tough for us to do that.
Yeah.
It would be nice, but you just can't.
Well, I know, but it's just something that we now have the fund created and we need to set up some bylaws.
They need something to kind of roll the ball and that's where we think you feel.
You could have some rules behind it.
Man.
Waste money.
I hear you.
So, that's our next step, you know, and we could, we could surely visit the, uh, Womagosh Foundation people or the Gilrenzi Foundation people, find out what it is that we need to do before we go ahead and, like, pursue things like that.
But it's, it's like you said though, Rob, when I first started as mayor, what did we get? One or two grants a year is about all we got.
Well, we didn't have them kind of opportunities.
And now, now we're getting way forward more, so.
I don't think that gambling deal was ever in years ago. I wonder when you start that?
Well, let's continue on Chris later.
Uh, so I'm on page twenty-four, that's our, the first page of our general fund. Um, and what you can see on there is, uh, the urban renewal revenue, seventy thousand dollars. That is, uh, the TIF money that we borrowed to, uh, buy the lots north of the store there. One other thing on there that I want to point out is our local option sales tax, nine thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. That's actually two months worth. We got, uh, July's on July first and we got August's on July thirty-first. So, you won't see anything in that.
For August first.
For August.
We will for September.
For September you will, yes, but you won't see anything in there for, for August. Just so you know that.
Okay.
When does that lot go through that it's approved that we have it? Is that done?
Yeah, we, we own them.
Okay.
We have to certify that debt before December first. And then after December first, we can go take the money out of the TIF account and we can pay the loan off.
Okay.
Yeah. I've signed all the quickly.
What are you gonna do with that house, Groans House?
Well, I found out today that, um, there really is no, uh, requirement for us to publish that. It's not real estate because we're not selling the ground, we're just, we're just gonna try to sell the house to get rid of it. So, uh, what we want to do is we want to publish it in the paper, um, and just, you know, see if we can get somebody to buy it, to, to move it. Yeah, it'll save us money to, to tear it down and, you know.
And I know there's different people after the garage, so.
There's several people that want the garage. And so my thought is, my thought is, is instead of saying, you know, we'll give a sealed bid on the house and the garage both, let's do a sealed bid on the house and a sealed bid on the garage. I think we would get, I think we would get more money.
Yeah, I agree, keep that separate up.
Yeah.
You got no reason if they want a little bit of both.
Right. I, I agree with that, Gary. But I thought we had to ha, I thought we had to have that, that, uh.
Since it's city-owned that you had to.
I thought we had to.
Yeah, I know.
Publish that for a certain amount of time.
Have a twenty-day period.
Yeah, but, but we don't have that requirement because it's not actually real estate. If the land went with it, then it would be real estate.
Oh, okay, I see.
It's just a house, so it's just.
It's just a house, yeah.
It's like when we sell equipment, we have to publish that for sale.
Yeah.
But this doesn't qualify under that, those guidelines.
Well, you know, and I, I think equipment would kind of fall the same way. I don't think we have to publish it, but I think if we don't, we would get questioned about our ethics.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought, I was always told we had to publish that for sale, if we have any equipment for sale.
And I think somebody says that we have to publish it, that way we don't get.
Danged.
Chewed out.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
So, give everybody, give everybody a fair chance, basically.
Moving on, Chris?
Yeah, uh, so if you look at the top of page twenty-five, you'll see police, uh, their salaries and generally, uh, our police costs are four thousand dollars a month. Well, that extra five hundred dollars is from the races. Right, and so, uh, Franny and I talked a little bit about that today. We're gonna, we're gonna need to get all of the bills that we paid and we're gonna need to go to the farm festival group at the end of the year and just tell them, you know.
You're gonna have to pay the contractual services.
I think, I think they're gonna have to pay for some or all of, you know, the extras, uh, because we do. Because we do have to pay for, uh, extra insurance for each race.
Well, them races, they say I had three cops there last time. Why would you need three? Two should do that. Is there any reason they have three cops? I had a figure eight.
Well, here's, here's the thing, Gary.
Tell me that one.
They wanna watch the race.
They wanna watch the race, the ones watching the race with the two, whatever.
I'm not, I'm not.
The last one was during water carnival. He shouldn't have been over there.
Yeah.
Well, I think they had.
Anyway, I just was wondering about it.
I don't know if it's due to the size of the crowd.
I, they said, I talked to somebody and says there's no reason to have more than two.
Yeah, was that somebody a cop?
No, but there's, I talked to the cop and he said you don't need more than two. He was in, he got a haircut, he says, well, how come you got, well, I don't know, we just, we just got three. So, we could check on that. There ain't much use of having three if you don't need them.
No, I agree with you.
You know, I don't know, it's, two cops should be able to handle that broad crowd we got.
But either way, I think we need to talk to.
Farm Festival.
Farm Festival Committee and, and talk to them about the police and the insurance, so.
Well, it's kind of like upstairs, you know, we started out, we, we were paying all the bills. They were taking in money upstairs and they were making some money out of it, you know, and then slowly but surely, now we pay, uh, the salary upstairs there. You know, we didn't do that ten years ago. We do that now. We've evolved into that.
Oh, we just started doing that about three years ago.
Yeah, because we found out they could handle it, you know, and they didn't have too much money in the bank. So, you know, as you, as you start working into this, we need to start letting them know what the bills are and then letting them, you know, and let them start absorbing.
And they do, they do make money on the races, you know.
Yeah, they do make money. We don't have to be at Santa Claus, put it that way.
Understand that, but, you know, otherwise, the other side of it is the city wants to promote it too.
Well, yeah, we're, I think we are.
Maybe we don't need to dump all of them on them at once, but they need to start figuring them into their expenses as they go, a little bit at a time.
That way if their ticket prices have to go up, they have to go up.
Yeah, it costs extra fifty cents. It didn't cover them cops, so be it.
Those are the things that, you know, I mean, we still want them to make money and we still want them to do it, so. It's something that we can look at and work with them as we're, you know, we as a board upstairs decided we would start paying for the wages and see where that, you know, because we had a, quite frankly, we had a business upstairs that just had no expenses.
They can make money.
It was easy to run.
Everything's getting paid for it, man.
I know.
Anyway.
Okay, Chris?
That's all I got on that page. Page twenty-six then. Park renovation expense, so that fifty-five hundred dollars, the majority of that is, uh, facade, which, I don't know if you guys have seen it lately, but it looks really good.
It's coming along.
It's coming. I mean, thanks for doing the watering.
I'm telling you, I'm telling you that, that, the grass seed, I threw some grass seed in there too.
That's pretty good too.
That's not growing real good, but the weeds are growing damn good, so.
So you can't, you can't spray that yet because it's new sealing out.
No, we can't spray it yet, but we're gonna go pull all those weeds and we're gonna send them back to Dell's. See if we can get a.
Rebate?
Rebate on that.
Okay.
Yeah. Lynn's in charge of that? Yeah, she's in charge of getting people together to pull weeds.
I suspect we'll get something then.
We'll get something, but I doubt it'll be a rebate. So, uh, recreation expenses, that, you know, that's about done. We got two more days, three more days of the pool and it's closed, so. Good for us, bad for the kids. Cemetery.
Oh.
That looks a lot better too.
Yeah, I got, uh.
Oh, I did too. I got a compliment from.
Several, I got about five compliments. They called me at the office.
Really?
Yeah.
Can you complain up there at the country store on water?
Yeah, you said that the cemetery is really looking fan-dam-tastic.
Yeah, you can tell where you missed a, a little spot.
Oh, wow.
Jakers Crepes, you can tell it.
Oh, really?
Oh, God, yes.
Where's that at?
North, uh.
North end up there towards where you go up and then goes across and comes down, you missed a little spot.
So in the middle.
About a quarter of this table and that, that clover is just as goddamn green as a gourd right there. You can, you can see it and I don't know how he did it. He must've turned because you could see it just kind of.
Didn't have the phone to spray out.
Yeah.
Ran out of gravestones.
I guess it worked. Chris, that's good. Uh, yeah, the middle of page twenty-seven, urban renewal development, sixty-four thousand eight hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. That's all the lots, uh, sixty-four thousand five hundred and then there was a little bit of expense after that. City Hall, I don't see anything really big there. Road use fund, that's just, uh, you know, normal expenses in there. And if you look at our road use taxes, that eighty-four hundred and twenty-one dollars, that's gonna be our normal now. You know, it used to be about six and a half to seven thousand.
Sixty-three hundred or something, yeah.
Yeah, and now it's gonna be, now it's gonna be eighty-four hundred due to the, uh, tax increase.
No, the gas increase.
Yeah, the gas tax increase, so. That's good too for us because we can always spend road money. TIF, like I said, we'll be getting some, we'll be getting some well money in here at the end of the, um, oh, October, sometime in October. Usually is when that comes in, so that'll all go into our, uh, general fund. We've got enough money in here to pay our rebates. We've got one more payment to Corn Belt. See, three more payments to Cookies and, uh, I think Cooks maybe has two more payments, so.
Boy, that'll help.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it'll help go away, so.
Well, the one is done in twenty-twenty, the other one's in twenty-twenty-four. But that other one will be good too because that's when, uh, WI E's taxes increase.
That should start sometime. We get, what, seven years in?
Twenty-one, twenty-one, it'll start.
Ten years now, right?
I think fifteen years was eighty-five percent and then it goes to seventy.
When they were doing their deals, oh, five's probably when they kicked it in.
Yeah.
Yeah, ten years.
Okay, debt service, nothing really changed there. So then if you look at our utilities, not very spectacular there, but.
It's because of the low revenue like you talked about last, or last meeting.
Well, there's a couple of different things that happened there, you know, uh, if you talk about revenues, electric is really what we get our revenues on this time of year because.
Air conditioning.
Air conditioning, but our, the revenues that come in in July are June sales. And there really was no elec, uh, no, um, air conditioning in June. It was a pretty nice month, so. You know, next month we'll be seeing. You know, next month we'll be seeing, uh, or this month now, in August, we'll be seeing those, July.
Hold that thought, cause I wanna ask a question. Anybody got low water pressure at the house?
No.
No.
You mean in the bathroom, right?
No, no, I, Mary, turn the.
Try to be serious.
Uh, she turned the washing machine on and it just barely trickled out, she turned the kitchen sink on.
Your, check your screen inside your nozzle, nothing?
It ain't neither one of them, because both of them are slow. The bathroom sink is slow, the bathroom toilet is slow, everything feels slow. It's like it lost water pressure.
Where you at now?
Maybe you got a line break out somewhere.
Three oh six.
Could be.
I was gonna talk to Rick tonight.
That's where you.
You're probably one of them like me that's got those old lead gooseneck coming off of the, off of the main.
Hmm, mine's new.
Is it? All the way to the main?
Should be, cause that, when that house blew up, they redone ninety-five percent of that, they re- completely redone.
Yeah, you're, where you're at, that's usually the best pressure, you're about the lowest in town, you know. Well, I don't have a trouble up there, so you should really have pressure there.
Yeah, when I replaced, when I moved in there, that gooseneck that came off of that main out in the street, there was. You couldn't even get a pencil through it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and it was lead, it was just a piece of lead coming off of that to get to my line.
Hmm, I think mine's all been changed, Robert, I'll check on that. Okay, continue on, Chris, sorry.
Okay, so I went to page thirty-three just so we could talk a little bit more about, uh, where we're at with our funds. Uh, by the fund, um, so if you look at the, the bottom two-thirds of that. You can see that there's thirty-one thousand dollars worth of twelve-five rebuild material in there. And we don't have any revenue for that right now, like I talked about, so. So, you know, that's, that's the reason why we didn't make any money last month in our, uh, electric fund, part of the reason. Uh, because everything else is pretty normal, um, I think our electric purchase was probably up just a little bit. Because of the, because of the warm month in July, so.
And Halitz rode strong.
Halitz, Halitz is, yeah, they're our horse right now.
Good thing we got them.
Keep them going.
We spent some money down there too, so.
Yeah. Um, so then you go to thirty-four, natural gas fund, and, uh, we actually made a little money here. Not a lot, we had some, some contractual services and some subscriptions that we had to pay for. Uh, and, and really the only thing that we have going for us this time of year is WI E. And we make between seven and eight thousand dollars a, a month on their transmission charges, so.
I've had one therm the last two months, so either I got a damn slow leak.
Oh, you might have a leak. You don't have, you don't have a water, water heater that you use, no?
No.
Maybe your pilot lights getting a little bad. Kinda like I got low water pressure.
Could've, you ain't picking on me, Rick, thanks, Ray.
Do you have a hot water heater on there or not?
No.
I'll have Rick come up and look at that.
Yeah.
Cause that can happen at the.
Well, that's what I figured, I, when I seen that again, I thought, I'll bet you we got a little leak somewhere. Can't be big, but.
One term.
One term, yeah.
Slide match, you should be able to find her.
Yeah.
You can smell it, so when there's a ga- natural gas leak out there, you can smell it in that hallway there, that alleyway, wow.
Yeah, you can usually smell it pretty good. Okay, page thirty-five, our water. Water actually made a little money last month and, uh, it'll, that'll continue to make money. Now that we've got our CDBG project.
Complete.
Complete, and, uh, the twenty-two hundred dollars that you see down there for the CDBG expense, I, I thought, what the hell could that be? But that's our, uh, that's getting our generator building put together and hooked up.
I didn't know if that was the grass or if that was what that was.
No, that's the generator, and so that, now that's done, and so that project is, is done. We shouldn't have any other expense in there anymore, so.
Hopefully.
We started the generator up yet, Chris? Kyler down there says we got it.
You know, I don't know if they have, uh, I know it runs.
Yeah.
We gotta run it, we gotta run it a couple of times.
Yeah, should have a one, once a month test to it though.
Yeah. I know Rick and I talked about that, but I don't remember if he, uh, if he's had Myron do that or not yet. Sewer. Actually made a little money there too, but we don't wanna talk too big about that one, cause we got this project that we gotta do up here on the street.
We'll be in the hole when that one's done.
So. Well, when that project's done, it shouldn't be too, that shouldn't be too terribly bad. We gotta get a couple hundred feet of pipe. That shouldn't be, you know.
If you got that blocked off, you have, there's no reason for that.
Well.
Driving on it, she just slipped one into her.
No, but I mean, it's been there about week and a half too now.
There's a hole too there.
Well, it just mended it over, it's done.
No, that, it's not done, Gary, because when we got that big rain again, then it, then it, that water went down in there and it pushed back up and it moved that concrete.
She's done up a little, I was strange.
And actually, Rick was out when it was raining and he said it moved up about this far.
Oh, wow.
It was, it moved it up a long ways, so there's a restriction down below that somewhere.
Yeah, there's a lot of pressure on that.
That must be restricting, we didn't have that heavy a rain lately.
Well, this was.
Look at all the water that goes down through.
I know.
This was right after it was done.
Did we have that much rain right after it was done?
Yeah, there was that, that three inch.
Yeah, I know where it goes. You're fault, you want it done.
I know it. I'm still happy, it didn't end up in my basement.
That's right.
He don't care.
Okay, so then we'll go to garbage and, uh, we'll look and see that that one looks terrible. Uh, contractual services and, and we got our new bill now, starting in July, and that was what, do you remember Lynn, a little over five thousand dollars for. For our tipping fees, or actually, it's our.
Fifty-one hundred.
Yeah, something like that. So that's about six hundred dollars more than normal, uh, than we had our, just our regular tipping fees on there, so. So, that's five thousand dollars that were in the hole is our contract there, so. So unless you guys want me to bore you some more questions for Chris?
They can't all be good, otherwise we'd take something.
Will that five dollar be picked back up with our income?
I think, Gary, it will, um, but I don't think we'll, I don't think we can end the year above water.
I'm just thinking.
If it was, if it was three thousand dollars, I think we'd be able to, but, you know, we've got, uh. That five thousand dollars we'll have every quarter, so every three months, I don't, I'm not sure we can make two thousand dollars a month.
And we may have to raise that, I hate to say that, but we may have to bring that up just a little bit, there's no, no reason going backwards on it. Something's got, it shouldn't control its own destiny. I mean, it's not a big deal, but I'm just saying.
Franny's been on longer than I have, and I've been on six years, and I tell you what, I've never seen it above water yet.
But we. You know, the sad part about this deal is if, if a truck goes down.
We're screwed. We're screwed.
You know, we really should be looking at just farming it out.
We just.
I think you're right, Franny.
I mean, if a truck goes down, then we just farm it out.
Yeah, we're done.
Basically, that's basically what you do.
But I think, you know, we probably wanna do something before that, because if the truck go down, then they pretty much got their thumb on us then.
Yeah.
You know, but now we can.
Negotiate a little bit.
A little bit.
Do you want me to talk to Rod?
I think we probably should, yeah, I mean.
Sometime.
I know he, he, uh, shot the Saks City a deal and they turned it down, they wanted, they wanted to keep their garbage, and he was gonna be cheaper than what they were gonna be.
Yeah.
I don't know why, I don't know, but.
Well, you know, we've, we've talked about that a little bit here too, Rob, and Rob's got a good point, you know. When we do our garbage, we get a, we get one day that we get to keep everybody busy, you know. And it's not like they're not busy the rest of the days, but it's just, it just helps us out. In those times when we don't have a lot of mowing and that kinda stuff to do, you know, so.
And we have, there are one day when it could have been a pretty tragic deal too, but.
Yes.
We've got a lot of extracurricular going on with the other stuff, you know, that. We've got the garbage and you've got the recycling, then you've got other stuff, you know, there's always another group there. But we do a pretty good job of taking care of our citizens and for.
Electrical?
Two thousand dollars a month, three thousand dollars a month, that's not a bad price.
He's talking about like maybe a couch here or, you know.
Oh, yeah.
That kinda thing.
But, you know, if they're not on the garbage, they could be doing maybe some more electrical upgrades, they could be, maybe they're fixing a water leak, maybe they're.
True, but you know.
You don't know where they're gonna be at.
Maybe have one less, less kid in the summer.
I'm still saying, you know.
You know, there's things we could change around, you know.
But, you know, you, you still gotta provide services to your people.
Of course.
And if it only costs us, at the end of the year, if it only costs us five to eight thousand dollars, then I think it's worth it.
I think it should pay for itself.
True, but let's, let's don't raise the rate and then say, well, we needed to do it, because, you know, let's, let's prove that we need to do it.
Well, I understand that, but.
Cause we're, we're still gonna be able to.
You're in the landfill up there, and, uh, you know things are gonna go up.
Well, yeah, that's because the tipping fees have already went up. That's what Chris just told you, the tipping fees have already went up. Now, Franny, just kinda ballpark it off the top of your head, what would a garbage truck, if you took, I'm sure we can save the, the back end, can't we? But we just have to buy a.
You could, but all you're doing is putting a Band-Aid on a new truck.
Okay.
You know.
So.
I expect you're probably gonna leave it probably around a hundred and eighty.
Yeah.
Dollars somewhere in there, be my guess.
Hundred and fifty, at least.
Yeah, at least.
Yeah.
And then you gotta maintain it.
Gotta put fuel in it.
I think Rob's right, I think maybe we better look at farming it out.
I don't think Rob said that.
I said that we need to provide a service to our people, you know, and we need to juggle the numbers first and look at it before we go ahead and say.
Well, it's, we're talking.
Abandoning all this, because I think that our people get a pretty good deal out of it, yes. But we make money off the electricity and the natural gas, and if we can come.
I know, we're, we're pulling a lot on our electric now, the new rebuilding projects, so we don't have a lot of electric money available.
Right, and electric's not what makes us our money right now anyway.
Nope.
It's the natural gas.
I think you could argue all night.
We used to always make a hundred thousand on that.
Go check, see once what they would tall it for and.
Sure.
And go, and just get, so we got the figures.
You bet.
I mean, it ain't gonna do any good to keep going back and forth till we know what the heck to do.
Well, it's, it's like Rob said though, we gotta, we gotta supply the best.
Yeah, I.
The best services for other citizens of the world.
I, I agree with that, but, you know, let's see.
Yeah, we don't need to go.
Compare things a little bit.
We don't need to go thirty thousand dollars in the hole to do it, I mean, that's what we do with the swimming pool.
We can't, we can't have all these holes, guys.
Hopefully cut that whole plug a little bit.
We don't have that swimming pool, we're gonna have some dead kids.
Motion to appro- approve the clerk's report.
I'll make that motion, we approve the clerk's, approve the clerk's report.
Second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve the clerk's report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Building permit. Is this for Franny Oric?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it on here? I didn't even look, Chris.
Yeah, and, uh, Gail, Gail got to it this weekend, and so he wrote up that he thought it looked okay.
I seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the, uh, building permit for Franny Oric, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Discuss and approve Chris Lawler ninety day review.
Yeah, so I sat down with Rick and talked about Chris and how he was doing. And then I sat down with Myron and did the same thing, and then I sat down with Chris and did the same thing, and, uh. Seems like, you know, there's really only one thing that, that, uh, everybody thought that Chris needed to work on a little bit. I mean, obviously, he needs to work on, you know, knowing what he's doing, but, uh, one of the things that. Myron suggested he worked on is slow down and, and. When you're doing electric rebuild stuff, you can't do, uh, A and then move on to E. And think the project is done, you know, he said that you can hurt yourself doing that, and so he's talked to Chris about that a little bit, and, uh. So, you know, we, Chris and I talked about that also, and I, I told Myron, you know, I would rather have to slow somebody down than try to speed him up. You know, by a long shot, and, and obviously, you don't wanna, uh, you don't want somebody to, to be going too fast and get hurt. Uh, or killed, but, um, I mean, if I, if I had to hire somebody, I would say, give me the guy who I need to slow down. Not the guy who I need to speed up. So, you know, Chris and I talked about that. Well, that was the thing, that was the thing that I told Chris that I saw. You know. He, uh, he comes to work on time, he doesn't go to, go to lunch early and come back from lunch late, he doesn't leave early. You know, he's always, he's always at work when work starts, and he's always, he always leaves, he works done, so. That's the part I like, you know, I don't, you don't wanna see somebody coming to work late and, and leaving early, because then. You know, you can kinda tell that they don't care for what they're doing.
Rob, you got a recommendation?
For what?
Salary increase?
I don't know, I, you know, I know that we're paying him thirteen dollars an hour and we talked about.
Thirteen fifty.
Thirteen fifty, talk about getting to what?
Well, we, we actually, we actually start, we actually talked about starting at fifteen dollars, between fifteen and eighteen. And, uh, we decided that we should make him work for, you know, that, and so. I don't know, I, I mean, we've talked about fifty cents, we've talked about a dollar, um.
Gary, your input?
I don't think fourteen.
I think anywhere between fifty and a dollar is not out of line. Because if he's doing a good job showing up for work, WI E starts at fourteen dollars an hour, I'm just saying, we're. I think, I think it should be.
I think fourteen's a good number, just because.
Somewhere in that area, I mean, I don't know.
He is doing electrical rebuild now with Myron.
Is he going to school yet, Chris? That schooling that Myron wants him to go to?
No.
Am I yet?
Nope.
He's doing his journeyman training.
Franny?
I think that's kind of a.
I think, uh, fifty cents is a pretty good number, you know, we don't wanna jump it up too high, and then we don't have a, a lot of room to move them again, so.
Yeah.
You know, give, we, kinda give them stair stepping, give them some goals and.
Well, and that's, it's a good thought, because in probably January, he'll probably be reevaluated again.
Oh, sure, we'll be on the other page.
You know, I guess one of the things we probably should stress to him, you know, we definitely need him to get, get going on his lineman's deal, whatever, you know.
And I, you know, I think, uh, I think everybody wants him to get that done now. But part of that is, is that you have to, you have to work.
Some hours.
Well, you have to work at that to even understand what you're going there for, and so, you know, I mean, he's only, he only started in May. You know, he's only been here for two months, so I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to get him to lineman school now. I think we need to wait, you know.
Don't have to first year?
And see, yeah, I mean, you know, maybe, maybe later on, later on this year, into the winter time.
Get a year into it?
Well, I'm thinking six months, maybe, Franny, but, but maybe even this winter, we can, we can start working into some of that stuff, you know. Albert, but.
Albert, your true sense?
I think fifty cents increase is enough for right now, cause like, January, it's gonna come again.
Rob?
I agree with that, I think too, if you go to school in, in January or whenever, you can't do what you. You know, the electrical, right, digging and all that, just won't be doing schooling.
Yeah, I, I think that's, uh, I think that's something that we need to do.
On the job train is better, luck teacher there is.
By far.
And Myron is a good teacher, but that's where he's gotta learn to listen to what Myron tells him, and not try to jump. Ahead of the situation, go from A, B, C, D on down the line, in which he tries to jump ahead once in a while, and he could burn.
And I think, I think right now is the best time to learn that, because everything that he's working on is dead. You know, in my opinion, that's the best time to be training, obviously. So.
Well, I would entertain a motion.[1728.14]
I make a motion, we adjourn.
No.
Oh, that's right, damn.
Increase of fifty cents?
Yeah.
Per hour.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to uh give Chris Law or, or it's actually John Law, a fifty cent increase in pay, effective. Effective.
August first.
August one?
August fourth really is his ninety days, so it, it needs to be retro back to that.
Okay, okay, back to August. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Last thing on the agenda is the mower deck. Chris uh talked to me a little bit before meeting. I think he's got something really good to say about this, so.
Yeah, you know, we talked a little bit about finding out what a deck would cost. And. We, we weren't really even gonna try to do that. They, Haley's wasn't. Coming forward with that information as fast as we wanted them to, but the way it worked out. Uh, we asked them to, to lease a, a mower, so they brought up a mower exactly like the one that we have. Only it's yellow. So uh Rick took it out and mowed with it and he, you know, he loved it. So he started looking at the deck and the deck on that thing is way better than the deck we got with the blue mower. So he said, well, you know, let's see what, they'll sell it to us for and.
A deck, huh?
Yeah, so uh they'll, they'll sell us this deck that we've got on our mower, cause we took it off of that mower and put it on our mower just to see if it fit.
I see there was a deck on there.
It fits just fine. Uh, forty-four hundred dollars for a deck. Uh, thirteen thousand eight hundred and something for a mower. Rick seems to think that this'll work for a couple more years, you know? Nobody ever knows when that mower's gonna die, but the deck, he says the deck is way, way better built than the, than the one that we've got, so.
Technology's come a long ways, but yeah, I'm, I'm concerned, you know, is a motor gonna last, but you don't know. Hell, I got a mower.
That's a diesel, right?
Yeah, the one that we've got is.
Hell, should we change oil and everything?
The one thing about it, if, if something still clunk on that mower, motor or whatever. We buy another one like it, we've got a spare deck.
We got a deck.
If we get ten years out of it or whatever, how long, have we figured out how long we had that mower?
No, seven is kinda the number that's coming up for everybody.
But even then, that's.
Yeah, we just buy the mower, we don't have to buy the deck.
Well, I mean.
If that were.
I think it's a lot for them.
Well, we see we've had two of those.
Oh, we've had two blue ones? Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
So we're spending eighteen hundred dollars a, a year on a mower.
Yeah.
Not quite two thousand.
Better not complain.
That's pretty reasonable for.
That's a one of a kind.
Yeah.
Do we have to, we have a motion for that?
Yes, we have to have a motion for that, yes.
Yeah, we do, if we're gonna buy it, if, if we're just gonna continue to lease it, then.
I'll make a motion.
Spend some money today.
Buy the deck for the mower.
Deck. Second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the purchase of a deck for the Ford diesel lawn mower. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay?
Did you need a motion on your low water pressure?
I wish I could.
Anything in the public, stressed deck. Deck.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Oh, hang on, I wanna find out if there's anything in the public forum.
Actually, there is one thing that I wanted to talk about. At the last meeting, uh it was brought up that our city ordinances should be checked to see if they reflect uh modern construction. Um, I called Lakeview and I actually sent an email to six or eight cities. Uh, didn't hear anything back from any of those. I called Lakeview, talked to Scott. He said that their height restriction is fifteen feet. He said we brought that over from Glidden, so Glidden's does the same way, so.
Okay, well, please be checked on.
I have nothing, but the house up there, are we doing anything in that house? What are you, what are you coming up with that other house, Chris? Anything in that?
Yeah, she, uh, I tried calling her again the other day, um, I don't know if she wasn't home or what, but uh she talked like she wanted to give it to the state or something, you know? I think she's, I think she's finally figuring out that it's not worth anything and that it's actually gonna cost her money to get rid of it, so. Uh, I tried to call her Thursday or Friday last week, I couldn't get ahold of her.[1716.51]